Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and continued prayers for our Officer Kyle Gil-Martin's fast recovery, and for all of those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild, here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
And now we have a proclamation?
Yes, we have a proclamation here for National School Counselors Week. So whereas the Council of the City of Scranton is desirous of acknowledging national school counselors as the nation celebrates National School Counseling Week, February 5th through the 9th of 2024, and whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential to set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, be it resolved that on Tuesday, February 6, 2024, Scranton City Council wishes to recognize school counselors for their dedication and commitment to the advancement and well-being of all students from kindergarten through grade 12. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a permanent part of the record of this council as lasting tribute to National School Counselors Week of 2024. And I'd also like to give a shout out to the school counselors that are champions for our students every day at the Career Technology Center, Mrs. Ann Jordan and Mrs. Nicole Walsh. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney O'Brian, will you inform the public of our executive meeting we had before the council meeting?
Mr. President, a notice to the public, immediately prior to today's two public hearings, members of the City Council of Scranton met with members of the city administration in regard to personnel matters.
Thank you. Ms. Spence with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, overtime report for all departments as provided by the city controller received January 30, 2024. 3B, correspondence received from the business administration regarding a budget transfer for the City of Scranton's Department of Public Works.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I have one comment on third order items, just to point out, we only have the month of January for overtime in. That's all that's included in the report, but DPW administration has already reached 40% of overtime, so we only have 60% more of that budget left for the remaining 11 months of the year. I think my only question would be if we could ask the business administrator if, is how, how is the city going to make up for that if we're continuing to go over? Are we going to be doing budget transfers to cover this cost, or how do they plan to?
I'll ask those questions, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a few announcements. First, I know Ms. Jeffries couldn't be here tonight, and she wanted to make sure that I reiterated and announced what we've previously talked about, but there is a food drive that's going to be taking place this weekend at Naug Park, Valentine's Weekend Food Drive that they have annually, and it will be Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. that you could drop off supplies, as well as Sunday from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., and everything's going to go to local food pantries. Some of the things they're looking for are non-perishable food items, as well as cash donations, could include cereal, canned goods, shelf-stable milk, powdered milk, pancake mix, peanut butter jelly, pasta, baby food, baby formula, et cetera. So if you'd like a chance to donate, that'll be happening this weekend. I've also previously mentioned the Scranton Ice Festival will be occurring this weekend. That's going to be Friday evening, I believe, starting at 5:30, and then well into Saturday, and there's different events that you can attend surrounding that. You could go ahead and take a look at either Facebook page or website for the Scranton Ice Festival to find out some additional events that you can attend, or just head downtown and take a look around and check out the new ice sculptures. I know I'm looking forward to it. And it is also February now, it's Black History Month, and on Friday, or I'm sorry, on Saturday here at City Hall, we did have the Pan-African flag raising, which I believe the mayor said it's been four years since we've been having that, so I'm really proud that we're able to have that in the city and recognize Black history here in Scranton. And there'll be a lot of events happening throughout the month, especially through the Black Scranton Project, so I'd encourage you to take a look at what the Black Scranton Project is doing and to see if you can attend any of those events. One of them is in partnership with the Scranton Stories, which the University of Scranton had put that on, and they're going to be specifically talking about, they're going to have a screening for those stories, and that's going to be taking place Wednesday, February 21st at 6:30 p.m., and that'll be at the Black Scranton Center up in North Scranton, their Center for Arts and Culture. And that's all that I have, thank you.
Anyone else? And just to add to the food drive, if you enter in, they say from the Olive Street side, and you go to the community room building, will be on the right, it's the small building that's right past the pools.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodawanis.
Joan Hodawanis, Scranton. You know, with recent meetings for Pennsylvania American Waters rate increases, the whole issue of gangs has kind of fallen off the radar, partly too because Lieutenant Gil-Martin is actually out of the area, he's down near Philly, but it's going to be an ongoing problem. And it occurs to me that our police department did a good job in trying to apprehend people who are involved in gangs, and they proactively got that one person off the streets that was heading towards Scranton High School. But more desirable than that is, we want to do things that'll encourage children not to even want to join a gang. And one of the avenues, one of the organizations that contributes to that is your public library. What you're looking at there are pictures from January when two firefighters went to the children's library and read books to them and told them about what it means to be a firefighter. And these kids are like three and four years old, but it's questionable, it's debatable, who had more fun, the kids or the firefighters, if you take a look at those pictures. And it's, you know, this is just one of the many programs that the children's library provides. They have programs for children from infancy through senior year in high school, and it's just one organization. But I have to ask you, when the public schools shut down for the summer, where do the kids go? Well, we know they don't go swimming up at Naug, but they've got a library system that's constantly open and is generating these kinds of programs. So hopefully, the library system will be a player in this youth engagement council that the city has begun, and I think we all have to be players in this because we all have skin in this particular game. And oh, by the way, Dr. Rothschild, does your daughter have her library card?
She does, and we go on the regular.
You know, the day your next child is born can get a library card, too, and I, you know, they have lap time for babies and everything else, so I hope that you're taking advantage of it. Now, I was happy to see the article about Lackawanna County moving forward on tax relief. If in fifth order, any changes to what Scranton's doing, I'd appreciate that. Overtime, I also saw the 40% figure. Now, could that be the snowstorms or the floods that occurred in January?
The point I'm making is that just about half of it's been used in a month. And I know the total is only $500, but I plan on seeing more overtime each month.
But they have had a pattern of exceeding overtime for years, so something's wrong. I also noticed that parks and recreation, they were up almost to 20%. I don't know that that many parks had that much usage in January. And the union contracts, still not on the website, firefighters, it's 309 days, police 193 days, and these are important documents because they show the tax pay in public, how their dollars are being spent. And I still don't see any logical reason why it's taken this long. Keep in mind that I expect to see in the next month's controllers' report, ka-ching, ka-ching, another check cut to Offburg as they continue to dot Is and cross Ts. Somebody really needs to get an answer from the administration why this is taking so long, and it looks to me like there's no cap on that Offburg contract. This could go on until the next contract runs out and we start all over again, so I don't know. But thank you, you have a good night.
Thank you, Joan. Les Spindler?
Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. First off, Mr. Smurl, you talked about Officer Gil-Martin, it's Detective Gil-Martin, not Officer. There's a big difference there. First of all, I wanted to talk about this last week, but I ran out of time. The people who were here for the caucus last week, talking about all the stuff they've done in the city, and they spoke about the parking lot on Main Avenue by where Allen Park is across the street. I spoke about this before, that, you know, they said it looks beautiful and this and that, but I've commented, yeah, but they took parking spots away. They should have asked the businesses there what they wanted to do. And I went by this Friday at 5:15, the parking lot was filled, there was no parking on the street, every parking spot on the street was taken. It's hurting the businesses. I went to Vincenzo's quite a while ago, asked Vinnie what he thought, and he said it was a terrible idea. He said, "We're losing business." So they should rip that thing apart and put it back the way it was. All they're doing is hurting the businesses there. Yeah, it looks nice, big deal, but they're hurting businesses. You can't get a parking spot there on Friday night. There used to be plenty of parking spots in that lot. All they had to do was repave it and reline it, it would have been good, but now they want to make things beautiful but not practical. Next thing, last week I talked about, I thought it would be a good idea for the police to have meetings with the general public and educate them on gangs. Did anybody reach out to the police chief?
I reported out in fifth order, yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you. Another day, I spoke about the railroad bridge last week on Main Avenue. I thought it'd be a good idea to send a letter to the railroad, maybe put more signage up. Was that done?
I don't know.
That's all I have tonight, thank you for your time.
Hello. Hi, my name is Jessica Sorenti. I'm actually from South Abington Township, but tonight I am representing the Scranton Public Library and the Lackawanna County Library System. So I come with some fun news first. I just wanted to let everyone know about, it's a relatively new service that we got back in October of 2023, it's called Hoopla, it's a wonderful name, and basically it does a similar thing if you've heard of Overdrive or Libby, in which you can download eBooks, e-audiobooks, it does have magazines, and it also has TV shows, movies, all that good stuff. And what's really, really nice about it, it's a cool addition because there's no hold, there's no hold or wait. So if you are familiar with waiting for a book, and it's a really popular book and you're trying to get it, Hoopla may just be the solution because it may already have it for you. There's no hold time, you just download it and start reading, or listening, or watching. So I do have flyers, if you would like one, I can leave them here, or I can just take them with me, but I just want to let you guys know, and it's all free with your Lackawanna County Library System library card, so anyone can get it, it's also available on Roku, your apps, all that cool stuff. So the last thing I have to note is, this is actually from our director at Scranton Public Library, he knew I was going to come in today, so he just wanted to ask a general question. As you know, or you may know, we have our Nancy K. Holmes Branch, which is in Greenridge, and we are looking to do a fairly major renovation on that building to make it ADA accessible. Right now it's not. And the one thing we'd really like to do is be able to have a handicap parking spot on the street near Nancy K., but we don't know how to go about that, we know that there is an ordinance process that we need to file, but is there somewhere that I can tell my director to start to file that application?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that thing go on the file app.
Yeah, I know, right? I can repeat. Is there a way for us to start the application to ask for a handicap parking spot for the Nancy K. Holmes Branch in Greenridge?
Yes.
There's a form online.
Yeah, there is a form online.
It's an online forum? Okay.
There's two of them, I think.
There's two of them, okay.
Mr. Volberg, you have those two.
That would be for an individual home, however, I could reach out to our traffic highway department, and they could do a site study at the library.
Oh, okay.
If you could just let us know where approximately you would like the handicap spot or spots.
Okay, is there a place or someone in particular I should tell my director to talk to?
Mr. Thomas has my email address.
Oh, he does?
He did email, and we're looking into it already.
Okay, I will let him know, thank you. All right, that is all I have to share. If you'd like a flyer, I can hand them to them now, if that's okay? Okay. I wasn't sure if I should do it this way, that way?
Don't give any to Doris. Thank you. Did I get your name correct?
Hello, my name is Rashida Lovely, and I am the Director of Operations for the Black Chamber of Commerce, and also the Director of Operations for NEPA PAC. We're located on 1818 Jackson Street here in Scranton on the West Side. So first I want to say that I appreciate what the young lady said first about utilizing the libraries. I think that that is definitely an underutilized facility that the kids can engage in and, you know, get them off the street and get them some outside of school education. So I wanted to get that out of the way first. So what I wanted to talk about was the gang issues that we seem to be having in these last few years. I want to start off by saying that we don't have a gang problem, what we have is a no father in the home problem, what we have is a poverty problem, what we have is a no enrichment program problem, and these are the things that I believe need to be addressed if we want to see any realistic change in the crime increases that we've been seeing over the last few years. I used to be located on 533 Wyoming Avenue way back in 2015 up into 2018/19, and all the way back in 2018, I was kind of sounding alarm with the school district, hey, I'm starting to see an increase in violence amongst the kids, and it really didn't get anywhere. So every year I would go to the meetings, and I would say the same thing, I'm seeing the increase, seeing the increase, and I really didn't see much movement. So when we relocated in 2020, I started seeing a lot of crime movement in the West Side area amongst the children. And so in 2021, Geisinger Trauma Team came to my facility, and they were telling me, hey, we're seeing an increase of kids between the ages of 13 and 17 with gun violence and knife violence, and the mortality rates were beginning to increase. They found it alarming that it was, the numbers were roughly about 35% increase year over year, and that's something that we should definitely see as being alarming. Now we're here. So we're seeing gangs, and I'm looking at the same kids with the guns who live in our area, they're friends with kids who are outside of our community, they're coming in because they don't have the things that they need. So as I'm looking at the funding that we're giving, I noticed that with ARPA, we gave out about $200,000 for the wellness and mental health programs. We also gave out for the behavioral health and response, violence and prevention programs, $500,000. Meanwhile, our congressman, who's a wonderful congressman, he gave our police in 2023 $3.5 million for community projects. We are not funding the things that are necessary in order for us to see this change, so I believe we should flip this. So for our wellness and mental health, we need a million dollars, not $200,000, and for our behavioral health response and violence prevention, that probably needs another million and a half dollars, just as a bare minimum. And so if you look at the first sheet over at the bottom, what we need, we need intense mentorship programs for these juveniles, we need to initiate targeted student wraparound services, we especially need to utilize online mental health services, because if we are paying attention, our mental health care system here in Scranton is completely overloaded. Kids can't see a counselor for like four months, six months, damage is done before we get there, so we have to shift to online mental health services so they can get the help that they need, and then as we get this backlog together, then we could push them into the physical spaces. Also, we need to develop anonymous gun buying programs, and they have to be anonymous. We do have a gun problem here, I see it here on the street, and if there's a way that we can anonymously get these guns out of their hands and get them back to the police department, we will be doing a service. And I'll say lastly, and this is really important, we cannot even report crimes that are happening. As a person who runs programs with juveniles, I see a lot of crime. In order for me to report, I have to go to the police station, I have to give my social security number, my name and my social security number. No one's coming in to report crimes if they have to give all of their information. We have to have anonymous services. Without that, nothing is going to work. But it's on the second sheet, I hope that you can see that we have a juvenile reaffirmation program, and so far we've helped about 20 boys coming out of jail, we lost three to gun violence, one is back in jail, but about 16 we were able to get out of jail and keep off the streets. We need to be focusing on this, scale it out, and we can do a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, council. First off, I'm sure all the property owners appreciate everything that was done for the city with the utilities, but in my opinion, the utilities on the PUC, you get nowhere with them. Next, believe it or not, I wish to thank Paige for finally getting to work on this building, because I love this building, this building is Scranton to me, and I appreciate her going to Washington, believe it or not, and making an attempt to help the flood victims who, like I've told you, four, five, six of them, I talked to occasionally, and it doesn't seem like anything financially has been done to help them, but, and another thing, these consultants, every time you open the paper, somebody has to have a consultant. If people can't do their job, fire them and hire somebody that can. Half of them don't even live in town anyway, they need consultants, but maybe you could explain this. Northeast got a three, additional three years for third-party inspections. What does that mean? A third-party inspection? Why can't the first party do their job? This is just such a waste to keep reading about consultants. And real quick, on the news, I forgot a day or two ago, Asheville, North Carolina got a grant to buy 14 electric buses, so I sure hope we don't get involved with them. Only one of them runs, and it can only go 68 miles. If you think I'm wrong, you get your computer and read about it. These electric vehicles are, they're just not ready for the public yet. Hertz got their whole fleet for sale. Ford laid off 1,200 people last week because they have such a stockpile. I sure don't want to see the city have to pay for electric vehicles, I know the deal on the code enforcement. And besides that, I'd mention the code enforcement real quick. Tonight, when I was coming on the 2400 block where the two illegal rooming houses are, there's seven cars parked on the sidewalk, and I saw, I don't know, two people with hoods on walking in the street right there. It's time to get the city to do something about illegally parked cars. I was at the corner trying to get here, there's a double parked. parked car waiting for pizza down there. Enough's enough of this, you know? You pay taxes. My inspection's due on three cars right now this month. My car insurance keeps climbing up. I don't have any claims. And they can't use the city street. Doesn't make sense. Well, if somebody would, you'd tell me why we have a third-party inspection that the first two parties can't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. The first thing I have here is, you know, we seem to be talking about violence and gangs. And when you look at the statistics and the numbers and the studies, the largest predeterminer for gang membership is a single-mother home. You really need to take this history all the way back to Lyndon Johnson, since this is Black History Month. He laid the groundwork for what I would believe would be the destruction of the black community by trying to entice women to leave their husbands and let the government help them because they thought that it would be much better for them. When you look at, statistically speaking, blacks had the largest marriage numbers and the largest church membership numbers before that time. When you really take a look at history, I think Ronald Reagan had it right when he says the government's here and we're going to help you, because it's led to a complete breakdown of our society. When you take a look at Chapter 61 in the statutes in Pennsylvania, the PFA laws, there's educated women now saying that men are the abused party in domestic violence, not women, just that women are smaller than men, and after they abuse men for so long, men lash out, and the consequences are usually not very good. And that when a man says it's cheaper to keep her, or I don't know what that other term is, happy wife, happy life, he's already compromised everything that made him a man so he could stay in the household with the woman. And when you look at statistics in regards to single parenthood, when men raise children without a wife, the statistics are basically the same as a two-parent family. And there's a lot more statistics, but I don't have a lot of time. I'd like to change gears here and say that we just, did we just lose the Director of OECD? Was she fired or terminated?
Mr. Morgan, we are not going to make any comments on that.
We're not making comments on a lot of things.
No, we are not.
And you know, the thing that gets me the most here is that we can't keep going down the road of collective stupidity, and that's where we seem to be. We've got a mayor who's changed chiefs of police, DPW, blah, blah. The list goes on and on. The council has no idea what's going on because allegedly, three are for the mayor, or two are for, I don't know who the other two are for. But you know, when you have a situation where John Poses comes into the council chamber and starts talking about things that concern him, about bridges and about funding, this city is just a complete mess. And every time Mr. Schmel, the council's asked a question, you just sit there like, can you tell me what the qualifications are for a city inspector to condemn a home? You gonna say anything?
Oh, you're asking me?
Of course. I'm looking right at you, sir.
Well, they all, they take a test if they pass the test. According to the Uniform Construction Code, then they can do that.
Okay, can they condemn a home before they pass that test?
I wouldn't see how.
Well, I think you should find out that question and ask that question, and try to figure out what the parameters are around condemnation and whether inspectors, how long is the longest employee in the Licensing and Inspections Department?
I don't know. We'd have to ask the administration.
Didn't you just lose your longest employee, and she was only there for 23 months, and she quit?
I don't know.
Didn't she ask the district attorney?
I don't keep track of the city employees.
Okay, didn't she ask the district attorney to do an investigation of that department?
I don't know that either.
Well, maybe you should ask somebody these questions because I'm asking you.
Well, that would be the administration's. That's not council.
No, no, you're our representative, and the Home Rule Charter gives you the authority to do investigations. And what I'm saying to this whole council here today is, when do you ever intend to ever do an investigation? Why are we losing all our chiefs of police, department heads? Is the Department of Licensing and Inspections being run correctly, or is it running rogue over the city? Are we condemning homes that shouldn't be condemned? Are people writing fines and tickets to people, and they're not qualified to do it? Is it your job to protect the interest of the residents? Whose job is that, Mr. Schmel?
That's the administration.
So that's not your job to protect the residents' interest? What is your job?
We're here for the legislative part, not to run the city. We don't run the city.
So then why does the Home Rule Charter give you the right to do investigations?
Okay.
Ask your solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Okay, I'll ask the same question next week.
I welcome you back.
Mr. Boldenbro.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask the administration if all of our inspectors that are employed by the city are qualified and licensed to conduct inspections and condemnations?
I'll ask that.
Thank you.
Oh, for certification? Yeah, they do go by UCC code, but that's where our third-party inspectors are for, is to make sure that's done right. Shelley Pratt McHugh?
Hi, my name's Shelley Pratt McHugh. I'm a resident of Scranton and a homeowner. I'm a gun violence prevention volunteer. I'm the local group co-lead for Moms Demand Action of Lackawanna County, and I'm the state lead for Be Smart for Kids. Gun violence prevention work can seem daunting, but there are steps we can all take to ensure our city and our schools are safe from gun violence. I'm grateful that the city has been taking this seriously, but I think there's even more that the city can do and that you also can do. So I want to tell you about Be Smart for Kids a little bit first. It is a public health campaign designed to teach parents and caregivers, anyone around children, about secure gun storage in the home to keep guns out of the hands of kids. And what we mean by secure storage is to have, if you're a gun owner, to have your gun locked and stored separately than the ammunition. We also do education about asking about guns in the home. So if my children are going to someone else's home for a playdate, how to talk to that family about how they store their guns so that kids don't find them when they might think it's just a toy and get their hands on something they shouldn't get their hands on. So we don't mean just hiding your gun because I know my kids will find things that they're not supposed to, and they can climb anything. So we talk about what we mean by secure storage because Pennsylvania does not have a secure storage law. But we have a lot of resources with Be Smart. We have posters and handouts about resources on gun suicide. We often give out gun locks as well at a lot of our events. Additionally, we have resources through Moms Demand Action and Every Town for Gun Safety that focus specifically on group violence. One thing that often is identified is that individuals at risk of joining groups are in need of extra social services. And I wanted to ask if there are ways to bring, to identify those at risk of group violence and bring them to events that offer job training, skills training, mentorship, support groups, and really specifically bring those resources to those most at risk of joining these groups. Every Town for Gun Safety has trainings and grants available. There's speakers. There's a whole network of volunteers across the country that are dealing with these issues in Philly and Baltimore that we could bring to Scranton. We're not, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We have toolkits and handouts, lots and lots of resources at our fingertips. Another important component of gun violence prevention is transparent research and data sharing. So what are we doing in the city as far as data collection, analyzing, and sharing that data? Is there a central office coordinating gun violence prevention efforts? Do we have things in the city like acoustic gunshot detection systems that can analyze where gunshots are occurring within seconds? Does Scranton have a street outreach team or teams, not something through police departments, but individuals that maybe were former group violence members that are trying to turn young people against that kind of life? Are there plans to implement a type of deterrence program that can identify people most at risk and bringing them together and bringing them some more social services that they may not be aware of? And city council can also use their power and their voice to support gun violence prevention bills in the state. There's a lot of legislation happening right now that you can put your advocacy behind because we know that states with the strictest gun laws have the lowest gun deaths. And Pennsylvania falls in the middle of that range across all 50 states, so we can do more and we could do better. So I ask for you to support those bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Doris Kozlowski?
Hi. Hi, everyone. Doris Kozlowski, Scranton resident. I really don't have much to say because I was here for Norma to mention the food drive that we're having at Naug Park on Saturday, the 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Sunday, the 11th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then Mr. Schmel also told everybody where to go for it, so I don't have to say that now. It is the old snack bar, if anyone, most people know what that is. Also, I wanted to say, in Black History Month, February 21st, at 6:30, at the Center for Arts and Culture in North Scranton, they're going to have what they call the story, Our Nation's Story in Scranton, and there's going to be Black voices, and Norma Jeffries is going to be one of those interviewed. So if anybody is interested in going, it would be, it looks very interesting where they're going to interview the people. Now, I kind of have to say something about the abused men by people like me, that, I forgot his name already, but he speaks all the time here, that spoke and said that all the gangs were because Lyndon Johnson told the black women to throw their husbands out so they can collect welfare. I think that's disgusting to say that, and I have to say something. And all gang members are certainly not black. That's for darn sure. And I just have to defend my species or my whatever. I don't think we're all abusive, and I don't want men using their wives as an excuse for beating up on them. And I don't know, I can't really talk now because I'm too infuriated. I'll have to come back and say my piece another time. But thank you.
Thank you, Doris. That is all for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else would like to address council?
Tom Coymanuka. I did manage to get a call back from the water company after the meeting asking about the overchlorination smell, and they did offer to come out and do a testing at my residence. But when it happens every week and a week and a half, it's hard to schedule that when you turn on that tap, what specific day you're going to have bad water and which day you're not going to. Especially with chlorine in the water, you really can't store it for testing because chlorine, when it's exposed to the air, naturally dissipates. So having them come out to test the water was kind of a no-go for me just because unless it was happening on that specific day, and they came out at that specific time, any evidence that they would pull from that, other than the public hearing of people repeatedly saying this is happening, would only go to support the water company saying there is no problem, when obviously there is. One of the solutions that they did offer was, I talked about people have instant hot water heaters, that when these dirt and chlorine issues happen, that unlike a water heater where the sediment sinks to the bottom of the tank, hot water heaters are, the instant hot water heaters are prone to clogging because they're on demand and they have very little filtration in a small pathway. And his response was, well, maybe I should get an inline filter to filter the water before it gets to the instant hot water heater. So the water company's suggestion for me was to protect myself from contaminated water coming into my house with soot and chemicals. To protect my system, I should, at my own cost, put in an extra filter to protect my water system from the water from the water company. That says quite a lot unto itself. Do we have any, switching topics, do we have any information on the Recovery Act, on the blank lines that were requested, when we had the lines with no description? Moving on to the Ukrainian flag and flying it out front. We're almost at three years, starting of three years at this point, and I believe it should be flown out in front of City Hall again. There was a statement made by the mayor that it was flown two years ago, and that was enough. Obviously, after all the death and suffering, that's not enough. It needs to be flown out front of this building on the anniversary of the invasion. Other flags are flown yearly outside of there, so the excuse of one time is good enough isn't good enough, especially when it's being selectively done. I understand the difficulty with Israel, and I would have as a mayor done a compromise of flying side by side the Israel and the Palestinian flag, both out there, because both communities are getting severely impacted. The civilians in both sides are under great harm, and at least that would have shown respect to both parties who are suffering. I understand in that conflict of wanting to not put yourself in it, but by refusing, you've put yourself in it. Moving on to Mr. Little, who comes in here. I understand he goes off topic. He rants. He puts out a point, and then he veers off it. When you've been in the legal system for an extended period of time, there's damage done. The legal system is supposed to be fair to every person. Unfortunately, it's not. Pro se and litigants are supposed to be given extra latitude because they're not aware of the law, yet constantly, when you are going against the state, if the state misses a deadline, they're given leave. If the defendant misses a timeline, you're out of the box and you're gone. The guardian ad litem system has been used as a weaponized system so that the judges do not have to make decisions in court cases. Unfortunately, from this, it goes to an ad litem, it goes to psychological review, it goes back to the court who says, well, it's been six months or a year, we need to go back and get updated reports. And this circle is devastating on the people who actually go through the system.
Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer and all that lovely stuff. We're on the subject of gangs tonight, and I had a few thoughts down there. Parents, I agree with these ladies. You know there are gun safes available in stores that provide sporting goods, and they're roughly equal to the price of maybe one handgun or whatever. And furthermore, I'd also like to point out that I think that was a white kid that shot Officer McDermott. It doesn't matter whether he's black or white, he's still shot. But I would like to urge, there are helmets available for police and gear that are, to an extent, bulletproof, and anybody that's responding to shots fired, any officer should have that. But furthermore, it was Ronald Reagan that invented the able-bodied system. So if you wind up out of a job and you don't have any other resources, like unemployment, you had three months to get back into a job or you're nothing but a drag on your family. And a mother was assumed to have to stay home to take care of the children. So I would say that did quite a bit more to every marriage, white, black, Oriental or whatever, to split people up. And sometimes marriages just aren't what they're hacked up to be. I'm married 48 years and soon, and that's okay. We're still together and we don't fight, we don't beat up on each other, but we have an unusual marriage because we just got married because we cared about each other and we don't, didn't raise a family or anything. So things have been fair when, even when they kind of sucked. There's no TV recycle scheduled for the spring. Spring, that was a mistake. That was back in '23. So before I wind up with some televisions on my lawn, please get some kind of recycling system going for televisions and maybe somebody will come up with a couple pennies and get rid of their old television in a better way. And last week in the paper, the fire and police pensions were denied a raise again for retirees due to the lack of solvency. And there's also a tax increase coming based on that. And I will point out, a few weeks ago, as I had, that there were some pension losses and we have to keep a grip on that. I mean, you know, it's just time and time again, these pension plans lose money for no good reason, and it's not restored even when there is a big downturn. The stock market's $38,000 or something like that, and we get excuses. Oh, we lost $15 million. We lost $26 million. Oh, we gotta raise taxes. Oh, my God. And once again, you know, I watch a lot of newscasts and stuff, and people are getting kind of picky about things with voting, and they're not going to vote or they're going to vote for some third-party candidate or whatever. And, you know, you've got to be careful what you wish for. The man back in Florida, in Miami, and he was leading a protest over the hanging chads, they're trying to count the hanging chads, decide what to do with them. His name was Ted Olson. He's an attorney. He became a solicitor, U.S. Solicitor. And, you know, he helped to get a slouch in the office, and the guy was on vacation all the time. And when 9/11 hit, he got a call from his wife that she was on one of the planes that hit the Pentagon. So, you know, I don't really believe greatly in karma for everybody, but it's, and I feel bad for him, but, you know, it can come and bite you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Monica Mayo, seven-year-
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Monica Mayo.
Thank you.
Seven-year resident, small business owner here in Scranton, The Johnny Bump LLC. Firstly, before I say what I wanted to say, I did want to correct you. The guy was correct. It was a systemic thing that took black men out of the home. That wasn't something he made up. That was actually factual. It just spilled over to all the other women. Anyway, I do want to go according to what Rashida said. I think that maybe the council could suggest that we can bring in the youth and make a council for them, and they can help us help them create spaces for them to be able to figure their own situations out because we are far removed from their age group. They know more about them than we do. Now, what I did want to speak about is if I could get some help from you guys. It's funny that it's Black History Month now, but I had an issue with Southside Intermediate. One of the teachers was reading a text and he outwitted said the word nigger. I have it recorded. He said, "The boy, the boy named his dog Nigger." My son quoted on the recording. He was told from other students that this is something that the teacher does frequently, which is why he quoted on the recording. There was also a text, a poem from Audre Lorde that they were reading, and it was talking about the insecurities of black kids, saying, "I don't like my skin color, I'm ashy, blah, blah, blah." I asked the school if they could remove the poem, and I also asked for a verbal apology from the teacher, just saying that the lack of censorship was not there. I did not receive that. I received the email from the teacher stating what the lesson was about, no apology, no accountability. I spoke to the principal. The principal said, "Okay, something was moved from the curriculum, but he's not going to tell his teacher to apologize." I said, "I don't see what the big deal is. Harm was caused verbally. An apology should be given verbally." He said he wasn't going to do that. I then called the school curriculum board. I spoke to the director of the curriculum. She agreed that the, it was the children's march that was removed from the curriculum. I didn't get it in writing. She said she's uncomfortable with that. I said, "I don't understand. It's being removed. What is the issue?" She turned it on herself. She said that she felt offended that I said she wasn't doing her job properly. I said, "That's amazing, when my son was the one who had to experience someone saying nigger." I then, I'm waiting for a call from Mr. Delov. He's supposed to be the head of all of the principals. I haven't received that call yet, but I'm trying to just simply get it in writing that something was removed from the curriculum as well as a verbal apology to the students that had to listen to this teacher say this. We know in Scranton, it's a big mixed community. It's black community, it's Spanish, it's Asian. We're becoming a melting pot. We have to be sensitive to these things, and all we ask is for censorship. I said, "I didn't feel the teacher said it in bad intent, but at the same time, you can do some harm even though the intent is good. We have to understand the sensitivity it is. We are 2024. We censor all other words. I don't see what's so hard. Instead of saying nigger, say the N-word." And we also cannot validate insecurities about black kids. We already know that the standard of beauty and everything is white, so we don't need to validate any of that. So we don't want that kind of teachings inside the school. Thank you. If you could tell me any help, like which way should I go?
I think you should, recourse would be go, you came and smoked us, which is great, making us aware, and thank you for telling us your story. But we, you know, don't have control over the school district or, but I would recommend going to a school board meeting. They have them like we do. And, and speak to the board of governance, the school board that can maybe-
So that would be like Mr. Delov, too?
No, you would speak to the board. There's board members, like there's five of us sitting here. There's school board members that represent the community.
Okay.
So I would suggest you go to a school board and, and tell us the same story, tell them the same story you told us, and, and they, I'm sure, I'm positive they will take some type of action-
Okay.
-further than, than you have gotten.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you listening to me and thank you for your response.
You also, you also might want to reach out to the superintendent of schools.
The superintendent, okay.
Yeah, and he's, right now, there's an interim superintendent. His name is Patrick Laffey. He's also the business administrator for the school district, but I think it might be a good idea to try to set up a meeting with the superintendent.
Okay.
Explain the situation and ask him if he could look into it a little bit further, maybe try to help, you know, correct the situation-
Right.
...for you. But as Mr. McCandrew indicated, all of us, I was the former superintendent of schools 10 years ago.
Yeah.
And Mr. Schuster is a former school board member, as was Mr. McCandrew, who was on the school board. So that would be your best avenue because he's right, we do not have control over the school board.
Okay.
But the school board actually had a meeting last night.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they, down at Scranton High School.
Oh, wow.
In fact, they just appointed a new superintendent of schools.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so they're looking forward to her starting on April 1st, but that would be your best bet. Contact the superintendent and, you know, you can go to a school board meeting and speak just as you're speaking to us here this evening.
Okay. I thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Those meetings, those meetings are once a month, and it should be the first Monday of the month. So they just had their meeting last night, so you're probably looking at March, probably the first week of March.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jenyla Anderson. Thank you for having me here. I want to piggyback from, someone talked about code enforcement and things like that. I've been a resident of Scranton for 17 years. I live next door to a building that should be condemned. I've been here multiple times to report the fact that there's rodents climbing up the building, the building collapsed in my driveway, the bee infestation. I've bought pictures here. I actually had, I think, someone that, that worked in code enforcement that came out. I called Scranton Police at one time when the debris fell in my driveway.
Ma'am, could you give us the address?
I'm 227 Steven Avenue, so I believe it's, I'm not sure, it's the corner lot on Orchard Street. I have build, I have, I have pictures of squirrels. This guy came and put a net up. So you see the squirrels hanging from the net. I'm scared to go in my backyard. From my understanding, the guy's a contractor.
Mr. Waldenberg, I know licensing and inspection has that address. If you will forward it again tomorrow?
I'll follow up.
Take it in there.
In the morning.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Also, I want to piggyback from the school system. I've been here, like I said, 17 years. There's been a lot that I experienced within the school system, and I know this is not that time now because I've heard about the school board meeting, which maybe I need to attend myself. But it starts from the administration of the school. It's, I've, I've, I've talked to principals, I've talked to vice principals. I know about certain issues that's going on in the school building that's being overlooked, like children bringing knives to school. I've had text messages on my phone of a principal knowingly that he knew kids were bringing knives to school. There's a lot that's happening in this city, and it's, I'm from New Jersey, so I've seen gang activity. I know what gang activity is. I don't think, again, if you see two or three children together, that's considered as a I've seen worse. I'm not, I'm not, I'm in defense of children, but not children that do wrong. I think, like Rashida Lovely said, the programs that need to be here, the funding that the city is getting is not being put into places where it need to go. I also, my children have been targeted here. So like I said, I have first-hand experience in Scranton. I have a business here from 2013. I got robbed right in front of my door, my car. So I pay a lot of taxes here, I pay into Scranton, and, you know, I am tired of a lot of things that happen here. I can't call the police because I feel as though when I do call the police, I'm not getting the proper help that I need as a taxpayer and a person that lives in the city of Scranton. So there's a lot of issues here, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rick Seifus. I am the president of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and AAACP for the Lackawanna County. As you've heard, I was, really was going to let some things go, but recently I was made aware of a picture that was posted on Facebook that was a depiction of a young black man who, for whatever reason, was always the butt end of a joke online as a meme. And a group of professionals, educational professionals, felt it was appropriate to put this man's face on a birthday cake and then take a picture of it and post it on Facebook. And when someone brought it to my attention, she was met with backlash from that group where they've started to reach out to their buddies in the Scranton Police Department to call them and threaten them and say, "You've, you know, we got a report on you for making, you know, threats through Snapchat." And no good and well, it wasn't her. When you reach out to your buddy that's a lawyer and to write out, and to draft out a cease and desist order, but it's not even an order, it's just a document, and in my mind, it's a threat, telling this individual, "Don't show up where these group of people may be." That, that is unacceptable. And this individual has children of color that are in the school, and today was met with a racial remark by a white child. The kid responded. And who ends up getting in trouble? The one that retaliated, all because he was called a word he knew he should not have been called. Now, what was, now what was, happened on the other end? I don't know. But as you hear all these other stories of parents, I can tell you now, if I really wanted to, I start bringing in parents every week to start telling their stories about what's happening to their children in these schools. I was late coming here because I'm listening to a child tell me how he is being pointed out in his school, and he's not doing anything wrong. But the administration in that school still wants to pinpoint him on things he's not doing, and he's upset about that. And today was the first time he's really had an opportunity to express himself. There are children in our school district that are suffering. They are being abused and they're being discriminated against, and they don't even know it. And you guys can sit there and look like, wow, this is really happening? No, it's been happening. It's just no one was willing to speak up or say anything. Well, I'm here, and I will speak up on this. I will speak for the people. I will be the voice of the community that feels that they have not been heard for generations in this city. And something needs to be done. Something needs to be done about what's happening in the school districts. Something needs to be happened, something needs to be done about the good old boy system that always has been talked about. And we all know what the good old boy system is. I got a buddy in the law enforcement. I got a buddy that- They are being abused and they're being discriminated against and they don't even know it. And you guys can sit there and look like, wow, this is really happening? No, it's been happening. It's just no one was willing to speak up or say anything. Well, I'm here and I will speak up on this. I will speak for the people. I will be the voice of the community that feels that they have not been heard for generations in this city. And something needs to be done. Something needs to be done about what's happening in the school districts. Something needs to be hap, something needs to be done about the good old boy system that always has been talked about. And we all know what the good old boy system is. I got a buddy in the law enforcement. I got a buddy that, that sits in City Hall. I got a buddy on the police force. We all know who those people are. And it's time that we start either exposing them or shutting it down. I'd rather not expose people. I'd just rather see things change. I'd rather start seeing people getting treated fairly and equally, in school and out in public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher, resident of the city. According to these, I don't, what I have is sort of personal, I guess, and not very meaningful compared to what these people are dealing with. But I'm going to go ahead, anyway. I got a what happened questions. Serenti. When we were buying, making the decision to buy Serenti, we were told that it would provide revenue. Now, what happened?
Wait, I have an entire document that I, I researched for this. And the original purchase, and this is out of the Scranton Times, and it's been updated many times. But the original purchase of the Serenti Center never mentioned of any kind of profit coming from that structure.
The mayor said it. I have it at home. I'll bring it next week.
Who is the man?
Pardon?
Who said it?
The mayor.
Oh, the mayor, our mayor?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I have it from 2017. I'll give you this if you want.
No, 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 I got enough paper at home, trust me. I don't need any more paper, but I-
It explains why the city bought it, their reasoning for buying it, and what was going in there. Now, if in the future, they, they purchased equipment that they said they would have other departments come in and use in something and make money that way, that's fine. But the original purchase of that was, never had that in mind. The structure was, it's very specific what it was purchased for.
President Smol, can I just-
But we made it, so what do we do now to get it, so?
To make, to make it profitable?
Well, to tell us what the purpose is and let the taxpayers know if that's, if they like that.
Well, I, I don't believe it's ever going to bring any money in, into the city.
Excuse me, but you're eating my time and I've got a few more.
Well, that's all right. You could stay.
No. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say one thing. President Smol, I realize you're referring to articles from the Scranton Times. They don't always print the whole story. Everybody in this room knows that.
Right.
I sat here when this was being presented to us with their plans for the Serenti Center. And I believe both Councilman Schuster and I posed that question. So, hey, is this going to be revenue-producing, any part of it? And they said, yes. They're going to produce revenue in a way where other municipalities would have the ability to use, you know, law enforcement from other municipalities would have the ability to use the training center. And of course, you know, have training provided to them at a cost. And, and, and so when I heard that, I thought, well, you know what? We need revenue, any kind of revenue. So I do remember voting in favor of it because of that. Of course, you know, I, I would have been in favor of it, but I was more in favor of learning that at some point there's a possibility for revenue. So it was stated, maybe not in the paper, but it was stated in this room. I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to debate it, but just because it was in the paper.
When I went back to the original purchase, it was back when Wayne Evans was on, Joe Wexler was the council president now. That's what, what the original thing was and, and the entire document goes on and says. And I did check many other ones, but I know they did say at one point they were purchasing equipment or something that they were going to use for training and also bring in to other entities to use that, to make money. But as far as the future is, I don't believe you'll ever see any money coming from this Reni Center.
Well, then, my, my question now is, do you all agree that that's a, 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 a building that's important to the city?
I do.
That's one. Okay.
So I do think, I do think we need an update. The piece that you're talking about with revenue generation, maybe when they purchased the system that they were going to utilize for training at the center. But are, are they utilizing the, the, I think they did at some point in time. Is it still active? I'm not sure.
Okay, I've got a couple others. We, you decided it was in our best interest to hire a lobbyist and to hire a nurse. What, when do we see the reports that tell us what we're getting from these two people?
I voted no for both, so I don't have any to read.
I voted no for both as well, but I, I thought maybe I had a response in this email because I did ask that last week for an update on the, on the Nosman contract. I, I got an update on the, the PR firm, but I did not, I don't think I got one on Nosman.
I see the Nosman one. No, I don't believe they responded to that. I think that is still-
Yeah, well, then maybe you could share it with us sometime then, so we know. And, and just something I think that you people should have done, Joan did last week when she announced that the police test would be given on the 19th of April. And I think, you know, we want, we want good policemen and we want as many people to come out. And so if there's an opportunity for people, to let people know that there's going to be openings, that it would be nice if you guys made those announcements.
That was another one, Ms. Schumacher, that I asked about when the next police test was going to be. I think I got about five paragraphs and it never gave me an actual date in the paragraphs, but it was a long-winded answer. But it's nice to know that 19th of April, there will be the next police test.
Okay, and then we did have a pave cut, a dedicated pave cut person on the, in our budget. And I didn't realize that when the budget came through last year, that that position has disappeared.
No, we, we currently have a pave cut inspector.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get it.
We currently have a pave cut inspector.
There's not, when I looked for it on the, online on who the pave, there wasn't anybody in the DPW. Is it in another position?
I, I don't, are they from Lips, Mr. Waldenberg? I don't know what department they're from.
I'll look into it. I believe they are. But we do have a full-time pave inspector.
Yes, we do.
And, and there should also be a part-time floater, correct?
One and a half, yeah.
Right, there's two in that department.
Okay, because we, yeah, we need something, okay.
They do exist.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Mike Mancini, resident of the city of Scranton. First and foremost, I'd like to give continued prayers to Detective Kyle Gilmarten. Continue to knuckle up because we're hoping for the best for you. I was raised by a single parent. I was five. My brothers were two and a half. I was raised not to look at the color of skin, but by the way that people carry themselves and the kindness of their heart. There's arrogant people in this world and those are ones that you want to try and ignore and, and keep out of your life. I want to talk to you tonight about this administration. I was a young boy, four years old. I was taught the Morse code, SOS, stuff like that, dot, 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 dash, dash, dash. With this administration, SOS means something else, stuck on stupid, all right? When you have three administrators working for this administration that are currently outside the city, that don't have residency, that aren't required residency, that becomes a problem. When your highest paying employee is the business administrator and she lives in Luzerne County, takes a straight shot up 81 and ignores our roads, what type of informed decision do you expect that person to make? Okay? My opinion, this, this administration is bringing us down, letting us down on every single level. Look at our roads. You're talking about a pave cut inspector. Where? What's the going size for a pothole in the city in order for it to be filled? The Wilkes-Barre city has a number to call for their pave, pave issues and their potholes. You know what? We don't need a number because every street is falling apart. This is one of our last remaining assets. With the railway system coming through in the near future, we're nowhere near ready for it. We're not ready for it with the police department because we only see 80% of its actual force, which the administration is putting at risk on a daily basis because they don't go with that old test, that LEAB test that was created and drafted and implemented through the Carter's administration allows for a lot more people to be approved and to be put on that list. All right, instead, this SOS administration decides to use a third person, company out of where? Portland, Oregon, right? Well, LEAB allows for more people to actually get on the police force, all right? It allows for 20% more approval rate. And with that 20% more approval rate, it allows us to pick and choose the ones that we want instead of just taking whatever is available, all right? I saw these brave officers firsthand, 4:42 in the morning, the morning of that shooting. I lived a half a block away from there. This administration should be ashamed of themselves for putting our lives at risk on a daily basis because she's not even from here, all right? Let's talk about Naug. We're taking two pools, same size, turning them sideways, putting them in a complex, half the size. You know as well as I do, anything in Scranton that's new, people come from everywhere. The old pool system that was open, what, six years ago? Kids have nowhere to go now and they're making poor decisions because we don't give them the necessary means to be better for themselves. And one of the things is that pool, all right? We're taking them, we're turning them sideways, turning the complex in half, right? Our predominance is towards pickleball, pickleball. Are you kidding me? Let me tell you something right now, pickleball page. You might be able to play games now, but one of these days, you're going to be up for reelection. And I'm going to be the first to tell you that the silent majority is sending the bus by. When you hear that horn, the silent majority is sending the yellow bus to take you to school. Good evening, Council.
Anyone else? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. I appreciate the speakers that came here this evening to express their concerns, especially with some of the school issues that are happening. I do want to encourage all the citizens and parents that are having issues or concerns with the school district to also make sure that you speak with the Scranton School Board along with some of the administrators in the school district so that your concerns can be addressed. In terms of an update from the Pennsylvania American Water rate case, we received a letter dated February 1st from the Office of Consumer Advocate. They thanked us for testifying at the hearing on January 30th. And he indicated that his office will use the information learned at these hearings to inform our advocacy as we press forward in this case and seek to ensure that the Public Utility Commission does not grant any increase that is not shown to be justified, reasonable, and in the public interest. As the case progresses, he's going to keep us in the loop here. He said, "His office and other parties who have challenged the case presented their initial testimony on February 1st in written form and litigation on the case will continue through the month of February, culminating in hearings before the administrative law judges on March 7th and 8th, 2024. After those hearings, the parties will write briefs that make their arguments about the scope of any rate hearings. The parties will write briefs that make their argument about the scope of any rate increase. All briefings will be finalized in early April and we expect the administrative law judges to issue their recommended decision in early May, 2024." So, once again, I want to thank the many citizens that are here this evening that testified that evening. And we're going to continue to press and make sure and work with our legislators to fight this, these huge rate increases by Pennsylvania American Water Company. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. I'll try to cover as much as I can. First, Ms. Lovely, you asked about an anonymous way to report. There is an app called Safe, it's safe to say. A lot of the school districts use it. I think it's an app that can be downloaded to the phone and you may be able to put some tips in anonymously through that. The next piece that I plan to talk about was the, the tax, the tax forgiveness that we were thinking about for the affected victims of the flooding. It was something that came up in council. Some of the, the members here brought it up in public comment. It was something that we explored. And Attorney Gilbride, as well as our former attorney, Sean Gallagher, also looked into possible tax forgiveness. So the article that you saw in the paper from the county is going to be this process. So maybe Mr. Gilbride could give us a little bit of an update, a little bit of a briefing on how this is going to roll out. Sorry to put you on the spot there.
That's correct. So the, the article that you read is how the county will be handling it for all taxpayers outside of the city of Scranton. I can't really speak as to the process they're taking, although I, I would imagine it would be similar to what the council and the administration have agreed to do. Here in the city, we, there is going to be a very hands-on help given to help the affected individuals make application and kind of walk them through the process required under the act as set forward by the state legislature. So that is, I know, I know a letter has already been drafted and gone out to them. And then, once that process is entertained, with the hopes of zeroing out their tax burden, if, if that, if, if that in fact happens, then there won't be another step required.
Thank you. I'm going to try to report out some of the questions I had as I'm going through an email we, we received today. I did ask about the ARPA grants for small businesses. One of the questions I had was if there's a penalty if the business fails before, in, in a certain port, point in time. And they responded back with, there is no penalty for the business if they received an ARPA grant and the business fails. One question I had, Mr. Waldenberg, if you could look into it a little bit further, was that the city had 24 micro grants of $5,000. If we could just get a list of, of those micro grants.
I will, sir.
Thank you. I had some questions about labor council breakdowns. I asked questions in the past about getting a, a bill list. And the bill list I received probably two years ago was redacted to the point of you couldn't even read it. I was told that the administration was in receipt of my, my inquiry and they were working on it. The answer I got this week, they seemed to answer the firefighter CBA portion. That it caught, the cost was, the total labor cost was $74,672. But they were asking me some more questions of clarification about whether it's just the cost of CBA negotiations or Act III proceedings. Mr. Waldenberg, could we reach out to the business administration and just see if maybe council could be provided with a monthly bill list similar to what the school district does when it comes to labor council?
I will, sir.
That might be more helpful. Thank you. We had a question last week about recycling, if, if containers would be provided, so I got an answer on that. The city provides blue commingled bins and red cardboard and paper bins to residents. To retrieve bins, residents should visit 101 West Poplar Street in Scranton DPW headquarters or attend some city pop-up events. The information is available at the city website. And then they did respond that in 2023, they were still doing Christmas tree recycling. That continued into January of 2024. That was the only information on that. We had a question in the last two weeks about Meadowbrook and how many rights of way were secured. Attorney Hughes is engaged on behalf of the city of Scranton, has identified approximately 38 properties to be folded into- 38 properties to be folded into the Meadowbrook flood project. To that end, legislation was authorized to enter into these easements as well as potential intergovernmental cooperation. And council is going to be provided with this in the near future. So, that information is coming. The last thing I'm going to ask is if we could also, I'll send an email as well, Mr. Volenberg, but if we could find out when we're going to have the Rubicon rollout. The last time we got an update in caucus, it was stated that it would be January. Me and Mr. Smurl did meet with, well, we met with the IT department to discuss DPW, and they never gave us a rollout date in that meeting. But if we could find out when we plan on rolling out the Rubicon system in the, in the near future.
I will, sir.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First off, I just wanted to start by saying that I really appreciate all the speakers that, that came out tonight. I think it's really important for us to hear about experiences with racism and discrimination within our city, even though that's not, that's not what we want for people to be experiencing. But we need to listen, and I really appreciate people coming to speak up about that. I know some of it had to do with the school district, but certainly not, not all of it. And there's a lot that we could continue to do better and partner with, you know, with our community organizations and, and try to make changes for the better of the city so that everyone feels comfortable here. And then, I really appreciate Ms. Lovely as well with the work that she's doing. And, you know, I think we need to work together and figure out ways that we can prevent kids from entering into a life of crime or getting in trouble for, you know, holding, having weapons, gun violence. Those are all major issues that we need to address and from early on. And I know that was a big part of why I voted on the Muffin contract that we had some time ago. I'm really hoping that that helps to identify ways that we can, that we can prevent violence in the city. And so, I know that we received updates from that the other week when we asked about it. I believe they said the springtime would be when we'd, when we would get that report.
I think it was possibly July.
Okay, maybe the summer. Okay. I wish it was sooner, but I believe that will be of help. I hope that it is and, and anything else that we can, that we can do to work on those issues that we have in the city. And another note, oh, and also wanted to just ask that, I know Ms. Pratt-McHugh is still here, if you are able to leave a list of the questions that you had, because I know you had some specific ones geared towards our police department and some of the things that we might have or not have, and then we can get those answers for you so that you're aware of the resources that we have. And I wanted to ask if, if we could get ahold of the demolition list for the spring. I don't believe that we've seen that, and I have some people asking about different properties and whether or not they're on the demo list. So, if we could ask code enforcement for that. One of the properties in particular is 1068 Cottage Avenue, which I was told was on it. So, I just want to ensure that it still is and see what others that we have coming up for, for demolition once the springtime hits.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And I also wanted to check in about a traffic study that I had requested some time ago, I believe in December. I had communications with Mr. Volenberg about it, and that was on Colfax and Olive Street. Now, in the past, when we've requested traffic studies, they've been pretty good about providing us with a response and a detailed response of their, their findings and any actions that would be taken. But I think this is the second time that I've requested one and have not gotten anything. So, if...
That's correct. I'll follow up on that. We don't have an answer as of today.
Yes, I'd like to know if it was completed and what the results were of that. And last week, I believe we, someone had asked about Meadow Avenue and what the plans were for, for paving it. I'm receiving some more complaints about that, about that street. And I mean, it's, it's the whole street, and I know that probably needs a complete repaving. But did we receive, I didn't see any responses come through on that. Am I, am I correct?
No response.
We, we were told they're going to pave the whole street. We didn't, we weren't told when, right? We didn't get a date. That was the last I heard, along with the line painting or the repainting.
Mm-hmm.
But I asked that last week, so I don't know where we're at. No response.
We don't have a solid answer. I'll get it. I'll follow up.
Okay, so that would be our DPW taking care of it. So, it should be on the spring paving list, which I think we also haven't received yet. Right, okay. So, it's February, so it's now a good time for us to start thinking about those things and making sure that, that a lot of those streets that we've been receiving complaints about that we, that we have set to be, to be paved or taken care of. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. So, I also appreciate, first of all, all of the speakers tonight and our regulars, of course, but those of you who spoke up and advocate for our children. I was thrilled to hear, I don't want to say I'm thrilled to hear, but I'm glad that you came and spoke to us. There are issues in the city that need to be taken care of, and, and we agree. But when it comes to the school district, I just want to reiterate that, being a former board member, the best path to take is like Councilman King said, start with the superintendent. Okay? And I, well, I don't know if you talked to the superintendent. I, I heard you talked to other administrators, but the buck stops with the superintendent. And then, in addition to that, speak the way you did here. You did a great job conveying your issues. Speak at a school board meeting. All right? We handle city issues, and we love to listen and hear from the public, their concerns, so we can act on them. And I know the school board is the same way. They want to hear your story. They want to be made aware of what's going on within the schools. They're not there day-to-day, like, we're not day-to-day in the city handling the employees here. But like they say, if you don't, if you don't, if you see something, say something. We don't know everything. Some people think we know everything that's going on, but we do have other jobs and, and things in our life that kind of get in the way. But again, go to the school board, they'll be happy to hear from you. And, and I'm sure they'll work very hard to correct your, your situation. Okay? Thank you. So, next. All right, so, Mr. Spindler's been here two weeks in a row, in a row, talking about the railroad bridges and the trucks that are constantly stuck under them. It's almost weekly. And this has been an issue forever. And I know, you know, the railroad owns the bridges, but it disrupts the city, the flow of traffic, it makes it unsafe for our residents. It's an issue that we need to take care of or work together to fix. It's 2024. I can't real, I can't fathom that there's nothing in GPS that can alert a driver outside of maybe more signs. Is that the answer? I don't know. Signs further away? I don't know. You know, I wish I could go on Shark Tank and have an app and, and come up with an app that would direct these trucks another direction. But I just think, I think we have to have a little better communication, I think, with the city, like I said, have, would you please have the city administration reach out to the railroad bridges and see what they do in other cities? Is it the same problem across the state? If it is, it's a problem that has to be fixed. Because not only that, but it's making the bridges eventually unsafe with the amount of times that they're being struck. It has to affect the structure. So, I, I know this is brought up yearly. If we can just reach out and see if there's some type of collaboration or to work on this, to remedy this.
I will, sir. It's a Norfolk Southern Bridge. I'll reach out.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. Last week, I asked about the status of the 5,000 promised to the qualified flood victims in the city and how many have received the funds and how many remain in issue. What I heard was the city confirmed 21 have received up to the individual disaster recovery grants, the 5,000. An additional 10 residents have met the eligibility requirements, submitted supporting documentation, and, and have been recommended for the funding. They may not have yet completed the final grant, grant agreement paperwork with the Scranton Area Community Foundation, preventing a delay in receiving their check. That leaves 74 residents under ongoing review and regular communication with the city's ARPA team, advisors, and answer, and/or the Scranton Area Community Foundation. All residents should check their email that they used to apply for the grant. So, there's an update for the ones if, if they're watching to see the status of their check. Also, last week, I asked if Chief Carroll would, you know, because Mr. Spindler brought this up, and it was a great idea. We need to, we need some education awareness about gangs and gang activity. Like I said, it's here. Can't, can't hide it anymore. It's here. But the public needs to be aware. They don't have the, the education awareness, say, some of us educators here have an identifying gangs and activity based on certain things that we're, you know, we have in services for at school. So, the public needs to be educated, and I think it's our responsibility. So, with that said, in some form, I don't know what the form is, but I'll, I'll leave that to the expertise of the chief. So, I asked for the residents, you know, an update, and the answer I received was Chief Carroll has been notified of this request. So, we're, we're awaiting his response. So, I asked two weeks ago, now, it's three weeks, I guess, because residents had an issue with DPW on the weekend. When we have emergencies or storms or snow or rain, there's no one to reach. There's no dispatch, no dispatcher to reach. And I was told, because I reached out on my own to workers, because I haven't received an answer yet from the director, which is a simple sentence, a question. And I was told, yes, there's supposed to be a dispatcher on the weekends when they anticipate an emergency, which includes a storm. Yes, there's supposed to be a dispatcher that works holidays. So, they, so there's someone you can talk to as a resident. But I asked if that's, if that's the case, I asked if there's, asked if there's a new plan in place of that, what changed, blah, 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 blah. And it's week three, I didn't receive an answer. What I was told was that they are in receipt of this question. Simple question, but it's three weeks. So, it's, it's getting a little disheartening here. Residents need to know, Mr. Volenberg, could you please relay that to them? That they're patiently waiting is like, well, I'm, I'm not, but if you would do that for me, thank you.
I will, sir.
All right, the lifeguard situation at Western Field, this is an ongoing issue for years. So, I posed the question again because these, these women that utilize this facility reach out to me constantly because of the inconsistency but being promised the world. And they're not very happy about it. So, let's see. What are the regarding availability and plans for indoor pool access for 2024? And what we got back was the hiring process remains like the last years passed. The Park Department will accept all applications for these positions. They will hire based on the applicant's completion of all required certifications. The Parks Department is currently recruiting these lifeguards and retain previously employed lifeguards to remain with appropriately staff during the summer season. Well, that's fine. Summer season's easier to get them. The issue is now. And it's every year at this time. So, we thought they had a strategy, we were told they had a strategy to prevent this this year, but it didn't work. So, here's what I'm told now. The availability of the pool at Western Field is open Monday through Friday, which it hasn't been, from 9:00 to 1:00, and Thursday and Friday from 3:00 to 5:30. These hours are subject, subject to change if there are no lifeguards available. But it appears to be changing every week where they might get one day in per swim. So, this is, I'm just reporting this out. I don't like what I'm reporting out, but the people that asked me the questions, I'm sure are watching and want the answer. So, it's not a good answer. We got to stay on top of this and see what we can do about that. What else do I have? Well, all I have left is I'd like to wish our solicitor, Solicitor Gilbride, a very happy birthday. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. Just a few things from last week, the bridge replacement and the Greenlight Go projects. We are waiting from PennDOT, contract forms, and also bid documents so that we can move forward with the projects. But until we get answers from PennDOT, we cannot move ahead with those. And also, the paving around the greenhouse, that was, I believe it was scheduled for last fall. Mayor Kignety told me she would like to include the paths that go around the, the gazebo up there or the, the big center stage and do that all at once. So, they're trying to package it up and do it all for the spring instead of just doing the road and then going back again. The meeting we had, myself and Mr. King had with Pennsylvania American Water Company, we had with the construction supervisors, and we, we spoke about, one thing was Crown Avenue, and, and that was a problem. And then, the other one was Myrtle Street. So, their answer to that was they are going to combine crews and, and pretty much bring everybody to one site on Crown Avenue for this past week and get it finished, and then move on to Myrtle Street with combined crews again. Instead of being separate all over the city, they're going to combine the crews and, and get these things finished. And they did want everyone to know when, the water company, PAWC, does main replacements, they pave curb to curb. And I found that to be, like, I'd like to see that. And so, they showed where we can actually find that. If you go, you can go to One Call in Pennsylvania. Every time they cut a road or something, that's all recorded. So, the paving is all curb to curb every time they do that. Now, as far as the other cuts and stuff, they say when they do the cuts for water main breaks or something that they have in the street, they do not go curb to curb. They only go a few feet past each cut, but they compact it and do it right. And so, that's what we were told by that. And the, I don't know, someone asked about the licensing inspection, why we have a third-party inspection. That, that goes by our, our construction code that we adopted in Scranton. We have a third-party inspection, and, and there's a lot of reasons for that. So, not enough time tonight, but we'll, if you have anything you want to know about that, we can get into more detail. That is all I have, Mr. Volenberg.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A. Reading by title, File to Council Number 3, 2024, An Ordnance Ratifying the Execution of a Temporary Construction Agreement Between the University of Scranton and the City of Scranton to Complete the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Projects in accordance with FEMA Debris Removal Construction Plans, which are to be completed by the deadline of October 31st, 2024.
You have heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I moved at item 6A pass, reading by title.
On the question.
On the question. Last week, I asked for an update on the FEMA projects. These are going back to 2018. I asked how many projects there were in total, how many projects had been completed, and then how many projects were still pending. We did get a slight answer that said there are approximately 20 sites that remain. Can, can we still reach out to ask how many total? And then, I, I take it that this is, there's 20 sites that are still pending, but how many in total and how many are completed?
I will, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Volenberg.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, For Consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, File to Council Number 2, 2024. Amending File to Council Number 13 of 2022, That Certain, That Close Certain Portions of Center Street and Lee Court to Vehicular Traffic to Develop a Pedestrian Living Alley.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for community on community development?
As chairperson for the committee on community development, I recommend final passage, but item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, For Consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 11, 2024. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement with Northeast Inspection Consultants LLC, NEIC, for third-party UCC enforcement services.
As chairperson for committee on rules, I recommend final passage on, of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, For Consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 12, 2024. Ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the United States Conference of Mayors Dollarize Innovation Program for up to $10,000 to be used towards the city of Scranton's up to $10,000 to be used towards the city of Scranton's economic mobility program.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for Community, Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, eight A. File to Council Number One, 2024.
This is resolution, is a liquor license application, and it has been tabled until a public hearing can be held on Tuesday, February 6th at 5:30 PM.
Eight B, Resolution Number Nine, 2024.
This ordinance, ordinance designates the 1200 block of Watson Street as a one-way street. It has been tabled until a public hearing can be held on Tuesday, February 6th at 5:45 PM.
Councilman Smurl, if we could note that those were held this evening and will come back next week.
They were, I'm sorry.
Held this evening and will come back next week. The eighth order items.
Oh, eighth order items. Yes, they will be voted on next week. Okay. Is there any further business?
Motion adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.